Good evening. I'm Lisa Wilson, the President of the Independence Chamber of Commerce, and on behalf of the Chamber and the City of Independence, I would like to welcome all of you to tonight's City Commission Candidates Forum. At this time, I would like for you all to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Well, again, I would like to welcome you to tonight's City Commission Candidates Forum, and at this time, it is my pleasure to welcome our moderator for this evening, Dan Reynolds, who is a law partner with Emmert Chubb and Getler. Please welcome Dan Reynolds.
And your fan club.
Yeah. Thank you very much. Thank you, Lisa. I appreciate it. Welcome to tonight's forum. I'll be the moderator. I want to thank everyone for participating tonight in local city politics. It's a beautiful day outside. I know there's other things you could be doing, but this is time well spent. Plus, there's weather places we can have cookies being delivered to your table. That's just a great deal while you get to listen to some great candidates speak tonight. I also want to thank the candidates for being here tonight. It's a difficult thing to be, to address questions in front of a large audience, so again, thank you for sharing your viewpoints and opinions tonight with the audience. I'd like to go over a couple of rules and the format of what we're going to do tonight. Each candidate has been fairly drawn his seating position tonight, one through four. First, we'll start out with introductions. Each candidate will have two minutes to introduce himself, tell a little bit about himself, and opinions, and whatever else he feels as though is necessary in his opening remarks. Second of all, we'll go to fishbowl questions. After opening remarks, each candidate will then draw a question from a fishbowl of 35 previously submitted questions. Each candidate will be given a minute and a half to answer his specific question. We'll follow this alternating process until each candidate has drawn and answered three questions, so we'll go one, two, three, four, one, two, three, four, until each candidate has answered three questions. After that, we will move on to the audience participation portion. We will take questions from the audience, from you guys and gals. As moderator, I will allow each candidate to answer two questions directed specifically to them. If there's not a question for a particular candidate, I'll then draw a random question out of the fishbowl, and that candidate will then address that question. Again, they'll have a minute and a half to answer any audience participation or any audience questions, or a fishbowl question at that point. Lastly, we'll go to closing remarks. Again, they'll have two minutes to finish up, to conclude with whatever remarks they feel necessary. A couple of housekeeping items before we get started. Number one, I'd like to point out that the candidates were not allowed to bring any notes, but they are allowed to take notes while the questions are being asked or during other candidates' remarks. Second of all, there's been, on your tables, you'll find pens and cards to jot down candidate questions that you can ask later on tonight during the audience participation portion. We will not pick up the cards as they're just used to help you in asking any questions to the candidates. I'd also like to say, in the interest of fairness, I will be strictly adhering to all of the time limitations, so if a candidate does run out of time, I might act as though I'm rude and stand up and cut them off. I'll allow them to finish their sentence, obviously, but we want to strictly adhere to those time limitations. Lastly, tonight's forum is being videotaped and can be watched on Channel 12 very soon. So with that being said, I think we'll move to opening remarks. At this time, we're ready to move with the opening comments. Please welcome candidate number one, Fred Meyer.
Thank you, and this is very Independence-like to see so many people here. This is what you would expect, so I thank everybody for coming. I also want to thank the Chamber for all the time and effort it takes to organize one of these events. It takes a while, and it also takes a lot of thought, and it doesn't just happen. So about 21 years ago, about this time of year, I was in a career decision mode about what do I do? Where do I go? What do I want to do? And I made the decision that I wanted to get back into education because I was in the oil business, and like now, it wasn't very good. And so I always thought one of the places that I would love to live in, in southeast Kansas, having been in Chanute, having taught and coached, been around a lot of the communities, always thought Independence was the place that if I had the opportunity to come to, I'd love it. Well, lo and behold, most of you remember Jit Milner. Jit, I interviewed. Jit called me and offered me a job that night, and I don't think he hung up the phone before I said yes. I'll be glad to come. And so when we came, you know, the community opened up its arms wide, wide open for me and my family at that time. One of the things that became clear was that Neowalla was a big deal when you teach. And so quickly, I was able to get involved with Neowalla and all the other activities that, you know, we have going on with the inns, the park, everything that goes on. And so 21 years later, did I make a good decision? Absolutely. I love this place. I want to stay here. I want to give back because it's been so good to me and my family, that one of the reasons that I'm running for commission is because this is an opportunity to help us continue to grow, help us continue to progress, especially after we've faced some tough times. So I look forward to tonight, and thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fred Meyer. And next up, we have Zach Webb.
Hi, I'm Zach Webb. My wife Dee and I own Webb Family Funeral Service here in town. Let me write off, say how proud I am to share the stage with these three fine public servants and thank them for their service. Now, my family has been in Independence for about 100 years, been in every civic group, organization, board, founded VVARC, Neowalla. My grandmother was Kansas Mother of the Year in 1967. My uncles were architects for Losi Gym, the high school, Penn Terrace, and all that. Now, me, I went to local schools, became a licensed funeral director in Kansas in 1986, then in Oklahoma and Missouri, and I've served over 5,000 families in that capacity. I'm a member of the Cherokee Nation of Oklahoma. I've been to Leadership Independence, the Junior Achievement Board of Directors, the Kansas JC's 1995 Chapter President of the Year, and all kinds of stuff. You guys know me too much. I'm from here, okay? I've been to the top, I've had a pretty low bottom, and I met everybody in between. Now importantly, why we're here, I would be for open, honest government, of course, and I'd promote the city at every turn. Okay, there's nobody, no big shots, organizations, employers, that have any influence over me or my wife that would ever cause a conflict interest. I'm independent. Nobody's more important to me than you all, okay? I believe in approachability and accountability. Now, of course, I would want us to be known as the best small business town in the country. To do that, you know, you've got to keep the taxes lower and raise revenue by growing the tax base. To do that, I think you have to keep the foot of regulations off the neck of small business that chokes off the spirit of entrepreneurship. Okay, 100 years ago, we were the ninth biggest town in Kansas. We need to stop shrinking from challenges and reclaim our place through a commitment to competency and character.
Thank you, Mr. Webb. Next up, Mr. Ned Stickman.
Good evening. My name is Ned Stickman. I've been here forever and ever, and in fact, going back into time, my great-grandfather, Josh Stone, arrived here in Independence in 1872. The Stickman side of the family's a little slower. They didn't get here until 1914, and I'm still living in that house where my dad was, my dad was born. In between times, I went to Kansas State University, of course, schools here in Independence, and graduated from Kansas State in 1974. Prior to that time, I'd worked in the park, 1972, 1973, graduated in 1974, came home over the weekend, started at Riverside Park on Monday of 1974, so didn't take any long trips. I worked at the park for 40 years, 30 years, as the park supervisor, and I retired in December of 2012, so obviously, I've been trying to do what I can for Independence all those years, and would like to have the opportunity to try and improve Independence even more as a commissioner. I also have some deep roots with the Chamber. My granddad Stickman, John F. Stickman, was the Secretary of the Chamber of Commerce from 1924 to 1935, which were really some of those glory years when we were probably running around 14,000, 15,000. It's when the Chamber became accredited, not accredited, they got accredited later, when they changed from the Commercial Club to the Chamber of Commerce was when my granddad Stickman was in charge. So, but so much for that. What I want to tell you, though, is a little story. Yesterday, I was out beating the pavement because, you know, I don't have $100,000 house to hold meet and greets in. And Mayor, there's $100,000 in it, but, and Mayor Meyer had a chance to be at the uppercut boxing club, which I hope went really well because that's a great organization, and I'm hoping that people made it there. Oh, I'm done?
Yep. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Stickman. I appreciate it. Next up, Mr. Gary Hoxett.
Thank you. Let me add my thanks for being here tonight. It's great to see this kind of turnout for this kind of event. My family has not been here for generations. I haven't been here my entire life. I am from Bartlesville originally, so I'm not from here, but I'm from around here. But I've lived in six or seven states, 13 or 14 cities over the year, but my wife and I discovered Kansas about, what, 30 years ago, absolutely fell in love with it. We lived in Overland Park, Wichita, and then Baldwin City, where we absolutely fell in love with small towns. Served on the City Commission there in Baldwin City. And then my wife decided to go back to med school at KU Med, become a doctor in the state, and basically required that we move to another county other than Douglas, a county that's underserved with doctors. So we undertook an exhaustive search of cities across the state. She was an engineer before a doctor, so of course, we did a very elaborate spreadsheet and looked at 100 different factors, and we spent our weekends driving around the state, visiting small towns, and filling in the blanks in our spreadsheet, and it became very clear that Independence was the right city for us, especially as we got it narrowed down to just a few. You know, McPherson was a wonderful city, and, but we'd go around and we stopped at the Chamber office and met Lisa, and we stopped at the Main Street office and met Liz, and Tim White was involved in the recruiting, and everybody was just wonderful to us. And there was really no doubt this is where we wanted to be. We plan to be here for life, which we hope is a good long time, and delighted to help the city in any way. I didn't expect to be on City Commission only a few months after moving here, but I would be very pleased to continue with that position if the voters decide it's a good plan. Anyway, thanks again for coming.
Thank you very much, Mr. Hoxett. One housekeeping item. Mandy, make sure that you put the time limits up very high for all the candidates and myself. Thank you very much. Next, it's time to draw questions from the fishbowl. I will draw and read a question from the fishbowl, and the candidates, in alternating order, will address those. So first up is Mr. Meyer. I will read the question, and then Mr. Meyer will have a chance to come up and address that question. Thank you. Do you think that any time property adjoining Memorial Hall comes up for sale, that the city should try to purchase it?
Property adjoining Memorial Hall comes up for sale. Well, one of the issues, as we all know, from how far you had to walk to get here, is that parking is an issue. And so what do you do about parking? Well, parking has to have a place that you can make it. We have some off-street parking. We have to use, you know, I don't know what would happen if AutoZone said, you know, we can't use that parking lot anymore. We'd just simply have to walk further. So I think we need to look at, it needs to be a good deal for the city, make sure that it is, you know, prudent, but sure, I mean, look at all the events that we have here and what we do. So sure, I'd support that, given if it meets our goals and our objectives, and it meets the needs that we have for continuing to grow this facility.
Thank you very much, Mr. Meyer. Again, each candidate will have a minute and a half to address each question if they so choose. Next up is Mr. Webb. Mr. Webb. What do you think needs to happen with the buildings downtown that are having structural
Being the new guy, there's going to be things come up that I'm going to say, I don't know, but I'm going to find out. Now, the structural issues, there's some things about that that I don't know, but I'm going to have to find out. I know more about inhabiting the buildings, and I could go on for that for a minute and a half. Of course, we'd have to take care of the structural issues. We can't have the way it is. We'd have to do whatever we could to take care of that. As far as inhabiting the buildings that are empty, the way downtowns are in the United States now, you know, it used to be a certain number of retail businesses were going to be downtown. Now, the way things are, with the recessions, and just the way it is with Walmart and the way towns grow, they're going to have to be more service and more business in those buildings. The city will need to do whatever it can to keep things from falling off the buildings, obviously. I mean, what other answer is there? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Webb. Next up, Mr. Ned Stickman. Mr. Stickman, what ideas do you have for addressing the citywide problem of abandoned
Well, that is a problem. We have a number of properties that are in poor condition. There are a number that are in unused. There are several programs available that, in various places that have been used. I think the current commission is doing a good job of checking those out, and it was a long time before we established timeframes for people to do something with those properties. We have code enforcement in effect to clean some of those properties up, but it's, it's an ongoing thing with, well, I was out campaigning yesterday, and a lady was complaining about all the junk in the neighbor's house, so I think we need to be vigilant and, you know, aware of our constituency, the citizens, and their complaints, and we need to work on each one individually. Long-range programs, there's not too much more that we can do that we are doing unless we want to get real aggressive in something like Land Bank. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stickman. Next up is Mr. Gary Hoxett. Mr. Hoxett, what do you believe the role of city commissioner should be? Number one, policymaker and planner with the day-to-day operations left to the manager and staff? Or number two, policymaker, planner, and hands-on involvement in the day-to-day management of city operations?
Thank you. I think that's a pretty easy question, actually, because we've already set up our city structure. Our city is structured much like a corporation. We have a city manager that acts as the CEO. He makes the day-to-day personnel decisions. He makes all personnel decisions. The city commission is more the board of directors, obviously has authority over the city manager, but should not get involved hands-on in day-to-day operation of the city. Really don't have any choice. That's the way it's set up. I do think we can provide a vision for the city. I think we can point in a direction, and Mickey's very responsive to, in my short time on the commission, anything I've asked him to look at, he's looked at immediately and gotten right back, and has seemed to be open to everything I've suggested. So I feel like right now, we're in a pretty good situation, where we are doing our job, which is to, again, oversee and provide, you know, insight, vision, guidance to the city.
Thank you, Mr. Hoxett. All right, round two. We'll go again with Mr. Meyer. Mr. Meyer, as city commissioner, what will you do to see the city projects like the ADA compliance, West Main Street, and downtown beautification projects are completed as quickly as possible and within budget?
That's a good question. Actually, I'm kind of lucky that question was asked because that's something that we, being on the commission, have a little bit of advantage over Ned and Zach, that we actually deal with that a lot. One of the things that I'm big on is planning and developing these master plans under a strategic plan, which the city now has for the first time. And how you manage that is you budget to see that it happens with the available resources that you have. And then you consistently ask the city manager and city staff then to continue to give you updates, because as you go through projects, as I know from the school bond project, is that there's always issues that come up. And so, you know, you need to have those updates. We need to keep the public informed where we're at, what we're doing, and then hold the contractors accountable for the timelines that we have. So that's a good question, and that's a big part of what we try to do, and thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Meyer. Next up, Mr. Webb. Mr. Webb, probably the greatest issue to ever face our city and its commissioners is in the forefront now. It is obvious that the Sisters of Mercy wish to leave Independence. If you are elected, will you support the city taking over the hospital?
Well, I hope I don't get six consecutive questions that I have to answer with, I don't know, but I'll go find out. But I tell you what, I don't know, but I'd go find out, because we will have to have a hospital here. Is it obvious that the Sisters of Mercy wish to leave? It is obvious they wish to leave Independence, and if you are elected, will you support the city taking over the hospital? For a few seconds, you're going to see me thinking on my feet. I would support the city looking at taking over the hospital. We will have to keep our hospital here and operating without any interruption, so I absolutely would look at the hospital, staying here and operating without any interruption.
Thank you, Mr. Webb. Next up, Mr. Stickman. Mr. Stickman, what is the criteria you use when, quote, "picking your battles" or prioritizing
Well, the first thing you do is you pick the battles that you can win. Secondly, you pick the battles, maybe firstly, you pick the battles that you believe in, and you make your decisions based on your personal views and your background and what's right for the community. And sometimes, that's difficult. Prioritizing, you also have to factor in the wishes of the community, whether there's public support. We had an issue with the Astra Festival in the JCPenney Building. We spent quite a bit of money on that that probably shouldn't have been spent, but we had a great number of folks who were in favor of that project, and so I would have supported that, because sometimes, you have to support your people and the people that are working hard in your community over what necessarily you would have do some other time. But the other thing is that in picking battles, you can eliminate a lot of battles if you do good planning, if you have your plans, if you know where you're going right off the bat, then you don't have to, you don't have to come back and do change orders and regroup and do projects over and over again.
Thank you, Mr. Stickman. Next up, Mr. Hoxett. Mr. Hoxett, what challenges do you see for this city? Briefly, what is your solution to those challenges? As brief as possible.
Wow. Yeah, in a minute and a half. Whew. Well, you know, we have a lot of challenges. Gosh, where do you start on that one? I wouldn't have said the hospital was a major challenge six months ago. I am concerned about the hospital. You know, I really thought that Mercy would find an eager buyer for our hospital. The hospital in Bartlesville or Tulsa, I thought it made a natural feeder, but it seems like we're about out of options, where, as was already mentioned earlier, we may be in a position where if we want to keep the hospital, we need to own it as a city, and we'd almost have to partner with Coffeyville, frankly, to make it, to make it work out. But something else that I've noticed a lot, when we first decided to move to Independence, and we were very, very excited, I'm sure you can tell Annie and I are thrilled to be here, and so we'd be over here every weekend working on our house, our mega mansion that you mentioned earlier, and we'd go into the Jump Start or whatever and say, we're about to move to Independence, we're so excited, and they'd say, why in God's name would you want to move to Independence? So I'm a little distressed about some attitudes in town. Not that many people, but enough people say, you know, our glory days are behind us. All small towns are dying, all small-town downtowns are dying, and we're dying too. And I just don't buy that. You know, sure, you're going to die if you don't do anything about it, but come on, there's a lot we can do, and I think in some cases, we need an attitude adjustment and perhaps some more, you know, visionary leadership.
Okay, now it's time for our third and final round. First up is Mr. Meyer. Mr. Meyer, why should I vote for you?
Well, that's a simple, that's a simple, good question. Well, one of the, one of the things that, in my two years that I've been in office, one of the things I think that people would agree is that I'm committed to being a good commissioner. I work at it. I study. I look for alternatives. I use the city staff, city manager specifically, as a good resource person, and I bounce ideas off of other folks. And so I work very hard at it, but one of the things I do think that I really do well is listen. I think I'm a good listener. The other day, I had a group of parents from over Jefferson that are concerned about 13th Street and the kids walking along 13th Street, which we disapproved, putting that sidewalk in all the way from Willow on up to the end of Eisenhower there on Spruce. And they said, is there some way we can get a stoplight or something there to help those kids crossing the street? Well, you know, that's a good, that's a safety issue, and I think that's something we need to look at, and we got some money here the other day, maybe that's, I don't know what it's going to cost, we need to do the research, and, you know, that would be something that I've listened to, that I thought, that's a good one. Let's see if we can make that work.
Thank you, Mr. Meyer. Next up, Mr. Webb. Mr. Webb. The city and community are going to be spending a great deal of money on dressing up the downtown. What are your thoughts on incentives for retail businesses to help fill up their empty
If the city is able to provide incentives for business owners, I am all for that, if it doesn't create long-term debt for the city. I am all for business owners, like I said earlier, about small business, about deregulation, any help they can get. When I started my small business, several, all bankers in town told me I had the best business plan they'd ever seen, but see you later. I had to go to Pittsburgh State to get 12 I had to go to Pittsburgh State to get $12,000 to start my business. And I know what it's like to be broke. I'm broke now. Right this second, I got a dollar in my pocket. Okay, we need all the incentives we can get for small business to do anything they can, whether it's in their business or in their building, to promote their business, to keep revenue flowing. I'm all about cash flow. If you have no cash flow, you have no business. You've got to dress it up. You've got to work it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Webb. Next up is Mr. Stickman. Mr. Stickman, what do you see as the most urgent need facing the city that you would immediately focus on upon taking office?
Well, one of the main objectives, one of the main duties of city commissioners is to establish the budget and oversee the funds. And so the first thing and the prime important thing that commissioners do is to budget, establish long-range plans, determine where these funds are going to come from. And so we, you know, immediately, we need to get a handle on our spending. As I mentioned just a minute ago, that we need to make sure that we plan so that we're not doing projects two and three times, making sure that they're on time. We do a lot of change orders. Those types of things need to be taken care of and addressed early on so that the money that we spend is spent wisely. People holler about increases in property tax, but, you know, when we cut down trees and then come back with a proposal to replant trees for $115,000, that's a 2.39 mil hit. So we look at... we don't want mill levies to increase, but we don't seem to pay as much attention to the mills that we waste and let slip through our fingers. And that's the main thing that we need to do, is make sure that we have a plan where we're efficient.
Thank you, Mr. Stickman. And lastly, we have Mr. Hogsitt. Mr. Hogsitt, what, if anything, should be done about the parking for Penn Terrace?
Wow, talk about a loaded question. You know, when I first moved to town, and I had hoped to get on city commission someday, but I was thinking five years down the road, but I started attending city commission meetings right away. And I saw the first proposal presented. The housing authority first came up with the proposal to build a parking lot and a maintenance building right there on those lots. And that was shot down pretty quickly. So then they tried the parking lot, filling, you know, basically filling two of the lots with a divider between the next house and control of the rainwater, which is a concern. And then they tried angled parking around the two lots, which didn't even get a second at the meeting, as I remember, because I hated that idea, frankly. And I know that we have one in our packet right now that's going to be up for discussion Thursday night that is a park. And I think it's a very attractive park. You know, the seniors in the Penn Terrace don't really have a good option for getting outside. This gives them an outdoor park with a gazebo and some exercise stations, a little walking trail there for that, and some parking. You know, if you have a new park, you're supposed to have parking. So it's a park with some parking spaces. I think it looks like a great plan. I'm eager to hear more about it at the meeting Thursday night, but perhaps that's a solution to the problem. I hope it is. Thanks so much.
Thank you, Mr. Hogsitt. All right, that concludes our fishbowl portion of the questions. Now we're moving on to audience participation. Now, this is a good chance for everyone in the audience to direct their questions to the individual candidates. If there's something that maybe a candidate didn't address yet, this is a chance for you to come up. I will introduce the candidate, ask if anybody in the audience has any questions. If you do, please raise your hand. If there's multiple individuals, I'll call on someone. Please approach the microphone and address your question to the candidate directly. For this round, we'll have two rounds. We'll go Mr. Meyer, Webb, Stickman, and Mr. Hogsitt, and then we'll do the same thing again. Again, we have a minute... each candidate has a minute and a half to answer any questions directed to them. With that being said, Mr. Meyer, you're up. Does anyone in the audience have a question for Mr. Meyer? All right, seeing none, I'll draw... whoop, we have... yes, sir. Well, sir, if you could address Mr. Meyer from the... Do you want to just go from there?
There's a what there?
A catch basin lid where the storm water goes in.
Oh, okay.
Been out of place over a year. We're spending all the money on these sidewalks and these... Why don't we fix that catch basin top?
Well, let me repeat the question so that... for the TV. And that's a good... yeah. The question is, is there's a catch basin lid that's off of the sewer or the stormwater drain, I'm assuming, at Ninth and Maple? Is that correct?
Yeah.
And why is... you know, we're spending all the money on sidewalks and ADA ramps, then why is that not fixed? And candidly, I'd say to you, that's a good question. And I would say that I would mention that to Mickey and say that that was a citizen concern that had come up. And matter of fact, I'll call him tomorrow at the end of this when we're done and see what we can't get done about. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Meyer. Next up is Mr. Zach Webb. Does anybody in the audience have a directed question for Mr. Webb? Yes, ma'am. And ma'am, if you don't mind, I know it's a long walk. Thank you. For purposes of the television.
Mr. Webb, I have a question. Do you have any specific plans to improve our city independence to put us more on the map?
Yes, I do. I feel we have a hidden industry that we don't notice enough, and that's our history. Asheson, Kansas generates a lot of revenue promoting their history. They have tours, bus tours, haunted Asheson. There's a thing about the stadium, and there was... I made a mention in a letter to the editor once about I didn't agree with Phase Two because it would disqualify our grandstand remodeling from being on the historical register. The... what would happen would disqualify it. And you see, we could have that on the Kansas State Historical Society, you know, historic place. And if we do that, it's possible it could be a national landmark. Okay? That's... the difference in those is, no offense to the booth, but it's the difference between booth theater and forged theater. Okay? So, yeah, I have plans to promote history. There is also, I was talking to a friend of my family, Mr. Halsey, about promotion, and he knows about that. He says he always thought Independence should be promoted as a city of festivals and promote package, Nywala, Inch Fest, Astra Festival, German Fest. I'm probably drawing a blank on a couple others. But promote Independence that way as a city of festivals.
Thank you, Mr. Webb. Next up is Mr. Ned Stickman. Does anybody in the audience have a question for Mr. Stickman? Yes, sir.
I'm Dan Barwick. I'm the chairman of the Board of the Chamber of Commerce, and the Chamber of Commerce is very concerned about the status of the hospital. Two of the candidates have already addressed the hospital issue in their comments, so I thought I would give Mr. Stickman a chance to address that issue as well. Could you please talk for a moment about the importance of the hospital and the community and the lengths that you feel the city should go to to retain the services of the hospital?
Obviously, a hospital is an important part of our community. Our hospital has been here for a number of years. The hospitals are changing. We now have regional hospitals. The status of the hospital has changed dramatically. I remember back in the '60s when this hospital was building extra rooms and had rooms and rooms and rooms, and now it's become a little bit more of an emergency room operation. So I really haven't had a chance to study the hospital situation a whole lot. I visited with Aaron Heckman at Montgomery County Action Council about it, and he said they've been trying to help. They really haven't been involved in that a great deal. And I'd hate to make any judgments right at the moment without studying. And, you know, the hospital people have been studying this for months and months, and so I certainly don't profess to know more in five minutes than the hospital people know with all the information that they have presented. We do have nice hospitals in the area. I certainly have no problem whatsoever in combining with the Coffeyville Regional Hospital, but it would take a lot of study. I would certainly not want to happen what happened to City Publishing when they merged with somebody and their first point of business was to close City Publishing and move off. So, you know, if we merged and had operations, yes. If we merged and were closed, you know, that might not be such a good thing.
Thank you, Mr. Stickman. Next up is Mr. Gary Hogsitt. Does anyone from the audience have a question for Mr. Hogsitt? Yes, ma'am?
My name's Mary Smith. My question is to you, Mr. Hogsitt. You've been standing on the commissioner already. What would you do if you get reelected? What would your two top priorities be?
Thank you. My two top priorities, if I were to be reelected, I think one of my top priorities would have to be the downtown. The second is going to have to be the hospital. We've got to do something to keep our hospital here, I believe. But as soon as I moved to town, I was asked to be on the Historic Building Commission, which I was happy to do. I was asked to attend a statewide meeting of the state historic preservation offices, and they said if you want to have any hope of preserving your downtown, you have to have a couple ordinances in place. One of them is a chronically vacant property ordinance so that somebody doesn't buy a building and then move out of town, die, doesn't have heirs, and we have a building just sitting empty that's falling down. It's not to punish anybody because their building's empty. It's just an incentive to encourage people to keep their buildings up and to keep them, you know, at least attempting to find renters for their buildings. The other, we were told, almost has to be passed. And you can tell when you drive into a downtown if there's some kind of minimum maintenance ordinance. You know, there's something called the National Building Code. It's a book this thick, and it's all the things you have to do to keep your building safe. And we're supposed to be enforcing that, and we're really not downtown. When we redid our house, it was enforced. We had to follow everything in the codebook. But downtown, we're not doing proper maintenance. And we're putting some really good incentives in place, I think, to help the downtown building owners, working with the college for some grant writing assistance. And the housing authority has dedicated some money to help redo upstairs apartments. So I think we're on a good path there, and I think we'll see some good action in that area. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Hogsitt. All right, this is the final round of audience questions, so if you have a burning question, this is the last opportunity to ask. Again, Mr. Fred Meyer, any questions from the audience for Mr. Meyer? Yes, ma'am.
My name is Debbie Miller. And this last weekend, you and Mr. Hogsitt had a meet and greet so you could meet area residents. And if elected, would you be willing to hold additional meet and greets with residents outside the election cycle so you can personally answer their questions and also hear the concerns of your constituents? Because sometimes the city commission meeting doesn't allow a constituent enough time to voice concerns. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you for the question, and the answer to your question is yes. I would. One of the things that I would like to do, though, and to help promote these discussions, is, you know, for the first time in many years, we have a citywide for city staff strategic plan. And underneath them, that strategic plan, we're coming up with master plans for city streets, sewers, sidewalks, facilities, those types of things. What I'd like to do is expand that. I'd like to expand that to include the community and then come up with a strategic plan for the community and let people come, talk to us, express their goals, their ambitions, their desires. And honestly, that, I mean, that's not an easy process to go through. But, you know, our role as a commissioner would be to sit there and listen. And then when people have spoken, then it's up to us to make sure what they had asked us to do, we do. So to answer your question, I'd like to expand it.
It's all about the community.
Sure. I mean...
It's not just an individual, one on one.
Yeah. And, you know, as I said, I am real approachable, I think. People can come talk to me at any time, and I'm glad to... you know, sure, I mean, if that's what people want to do, then sure, I'm glad to do that. And thanks for the opportunity.
Thank you, Mr. Meyer. Next up, Mr. Zach Webb. Any audience questions for Mr. Webb? Okay, seeing none, I'll draw one from Fishbowl.
I might ask Mr. Webb, well, if it relates to his observation about taxation. This, as a matter of my own personal experience, taxes not kept to a very minimum can actually be very destructive. And I think one of the problems we have in Independence is that we're kind of tax-tax happy, and we're removing a lot of property from the tax rolls. And that means that the people left behind that own a home are going to have to absorb the increased cost of administrative government. And I don't think that's fair. I think we need to do things to keep taxes down and keep the people in best interest at heart.
I'll try to repeat that question. Could we not start the time until I... okay. And I understand it, but did you go back to the beginning? Okay, how are we going to keep taxes at a minimum? You're concerned about property, property getting condemned and coming off the tax roll. Was there another part? If anybody knows another part, just holler it out to me. Okay. Okay. Of course, I'd like to keep property or keep taxes at a minimum, especially the property taxes. I'll hit that real quick. There is a lot of condemnation of houses in town, and I was talking to a fella, and we do need to condemn things that on the outside are dangerous and for the reasons that we do. There's also things that I think we're getting inside people's house a little too much. I don't think government needs to be up in your house if your kitchen cabinets aren't up to code, but you've been working at getting the outside right. Okay? Because there's poor people in town that they hide from fire trucks, from what I hear, because they think the city's coming after them. Okay? We got divisions in town over things like this. So we need to condemn the houses, we need to, but not overreach on that. Other ways to keep our taxes down, there's ways to... there's things we spent money on, like a $15,000 expert tells us that we need curb appeal. And I... we do need those fresh eyes to look at things sometimes, but at the same time, we're holding a 2,009, 102-page report from a more expensive expert to Main Street about everything about downtown that you ever could have dreamed of. So there's things we don't need to be spending that much money on. And if we save there, we can keep taxes down and save money elsewhere. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Webb. Next up is Mr. Ned Stickman. Does anyone have a question for Mr. Ned Stickman? Yes, ma'am.
I would like to know, how would you reunite our community?
Well, that's one of my objectives, of course, and others here have mentioned that, that we really do need to work on our attitudes. Independence is a great town, and... oh, I didn't repeat the question because I've forgotten the question already. How would we... reunite? And that is, I made the comment a while back about, I thought we had Northsiders and Southsiders, but I'm not sure that it's Northside and Southside as much as it is an economic level distinction. And people don't talk to each other a great deal. We have some great assets...
We have some great assets in the community, but we don't have a chance to really meld those groups, other than perhaps at the Open Arms Diner when we have some people that come in. But even there, it's a little bit more of a, you know, we're doing something for these poor people. These are our citizens. We're all citizens in Independence, and we have great things to be proud of. I hope to do some things that would help establish some pride in the community. We have pride now, and we have two pride committees. But I don't mean just a committee. I mean, we really need to feel good about ourselves, the agenda that's coming up. There's going to be a recognition of Ken Brown, but there are other folks in the community. You know, there are people like Norbert Neal that came in first place in Honey at the State Fair, and then in California nationally, and Guy Ray Rutland in the Hall of Fame. We just had another, way of Remington in the Hall of Fame.
Thank you very much, Mr. Stickman.[1109.13][1109.13](applause) Last up, Mr. Gary Hogsett. Does anyone in the audience have a question for Mr. Hogsett? Yes, ma'am.
Certainly, please.
Mr. Hogsett, I have raised all four of my children here in Independence and graduated them. There is an issue that had been brought to my attention that I didn't know about. It's on West Laurel, towards the 18th, 19th Street, where the children have to wait for the bus there before they can be picked up to go to school in all kinds of inclement weather. There was a young man that owned a house on the corner that had burned recently and had offered to turn it into a shelter, like a little you would find at a bus station, you know, someplace for when it was raining, or maybe put a little place for them to swing or park or wait for the buses to keep them out of the road from running back and forth. And he was denied. He was told it wasn't even a possibility. Do you have any suggestions of what we could do to make it better for our children? Because our children will be our legacy that follows after us.
I appreciate the question. I'm certainly concerned about our children, our legacy. My wife and I have two kids of our own that we worry about every day, some days more than others. I had not heard of that. Is that a recent event? Because I don't believe that's been brought to the Commission since I've started attending Commission meetings. I just don't know how to answer the question. Like Zach was saying earlier, this might have to be one of those questions where I just say, I'm not sure, but I'd be happy to check on it. To me, it's something we'd have to work with the school district if we need some kind of bus shelter. That might be more of a school district first effort to do that, but I don't know why we couldn't provide something like that, especially if somebody volunteered to do it and provide that. It seems like it could be a logical thing to at least consider. Maybe there are issues I'm not aware of, though. Sorry, that's a lousy answer, but it's the best I can do.[1238.53][1238.53](applause)
Thank you, Mr. Hogsett. And that's going to conclude our question portion of tonight's activities. Lastly, we'll go to closing remarks. Each candidate will have a chance to make a closing remark. There'll be two minutes per candidate. First up is Mr. Fred Meyer.
Again, I'd like to thank everybody for coming this evening. I appreciate it's tough to get up and ask a question. So those folks that got up and asked questions, thank you for doing that. Also, thank the Chamber again. One of the things since I've been on the Commission I'm really proud of is that we've made some good progress, we've made some good inroads, we've started some really good things in terms of planning so that we can budget properly, and I'm just excited about the opportunity to continue those initiatives. I've just got started on them, actually. Two years is just really the beginning part of it, and, boy, I'd like to have the opportunity to finish and see those through, because I think there's so much unlimited potential for Independence that we can tap into. We just have to have a plan, we have to have resources, and we have to have the people and support to do it. That's why you should vote for me. On April 7th, you can vote early, by the way, and I plan to do that hopefully tomorrow Friday. It doesn't take very long to vote early, so go vote early, but for sure, go to the polls on Tuesday, the 7th, and hopefully you'll buy the little check right there. No Chad's, but you'll mark Fred Meyer. Thank you.[1345.21][1345.21](applause)
Thank you, Mr. Meyer. Next up, Mr. Zach Webb.
I've mentioned on social media about elephants in the room and divisive gaps in town, and there are divisive gaps in our town, and socially, economically, ethnic gaps. I'd like to work to try to bridge these gaps. You know, our community has such a unique identity. There's so much opportunity coming up. You realize we have the 150th anniversary of the founding of our town coming up probably by the end of the top vote-getters term, when it comes up. There's going to be a lot of things happening. Okay? If I'm elected, I know the way it's been for me. As a funeral director, I have a code. Either I'm a public servant, or I am a parasite on society. So that's in my fiber, okay? I want to be the public servant. I want you to come to me. I want to help. It's, there's been things with me. I've had doors slammed in my face a little bit sometimes here, and I am not the kind of guy that will sit here for 30 minutes and tell you why I can't do something for you, even if I can't, when I can tell you for 10 seconds how bad I want to go try and find out what all I can do for you. And that's why you should vote for me, and I appreciate your vote. Okay? Thank you.[1449.51][1449.51](applause)
Thank you, Mr. Webb. Next up is Mr. Ned Stickman.
Two minutes is not a long time. 18 minutes, whatever we have here, is not a long time for the challenges that we face. And we haven't mentioned a number of them that I hope to get to here in a minute, but first I want to tell you the story that I ran out of time on first, because I was out campaigning yesterday, and I was campaigning up and down Main Street, and you have to climb over the dirt piles that are this deep, and people can't get in and out of their houses. Many of those houses are empty. And I ran across this couple that have just moved here from Indiana, and so I was apologizing for Main Street, and they said, oh, we think it's great. We're just amazed at how fast they've moved from 10th Street to 16th Street, and we're going to have a brand-new sidewalk. And so we visit, but the extra traffic on the alley, we've got this big mud hole back in the alley. And so we went around and we looked at this mud hole, and, yeah, it wasn't real big, but it had water in it. And so I called Carol at City Hall and said, Carol, do you do the work orders? And she said, yeah, everybody does work orders here. And I said, well, can you send, I hope Mike got that. But anyway, so we called in a work order. I asked her, have you called anybody? Well, no. You know, the people are from Indiana. They, you know, we assume that, because we have internet, except I didn't have time to look at mine this afternoon, that everybody's on the computer, everybody has internet, and everybody knows things. And, did you wave that? Anyway, okay, thank you. Anyway, we assume these things from our own area, and that's why I was mentioning that we can have meet and greets, we can have public hearings, we can invite people to come to meetings, but the Commissioner that I want to be is the one that's out there beating the pavement and talking to people where they live and where their problems are. Looking at the manhole, or not the sewer lids, there's one on Oak Street that thousands of people go by every day that's been broken also, and we need to get these things done. So, anyway, that's the, she just held up 30 seconds. Sorry. Anyway.
Thank you, Mr. Stickman.[1593.38][1593.38](applause) And lastly, Mr. Gary Hogsett.
Thanks again for coming tonight. Really exciting to see so many people here so concerned about the future of our city. And I really am serious when I say I think this is a fantastic city. We really did look all over the state of Kansas. We got so much going for us. Yeah, we got issues, of course, every city does. And we've got some divisions. I've had people say, well, you're a North-ender, whatever that means. I say, wait, I'm almost on the south end of the town, you know? Well, you're a country club member. I said, no, I don't even play golf. I've never, I don't belong to the country club. And, you know, we've had some great crews, we had several different construction crews working on our house, and I said, I can be good friends with these guys. I mean, some great people, and I've not seen them since. You know, the last time I saw them was the last year we were in the house, so it's like if you don't run in their circle, you don't see them. So I know we have some divisions in town, but it's a great city. We have so much going for us. And those of you that have lived here a long time, 30 years, 50 years, your whole lives, you don't appreciate it. You know, go live in Philadelphia for a couple years, and then come back. Holy smokes, you'll say, this is heaven on earth. It's a great city. However, we can't live on our history. I love our history. I've read everything I can about our history. I love reading about the trolley system, all the amazing things we've had in town, but we can't live on our history. We can only live now and in the future. And we have tremendous opportunities, but it just takes work, it takes some hard decisions. You know, one time someone will come up to me and say, we've got to lower taxes. I hear that a lot. And then the next person will say, we've got to do something to keep our streets cleaner, our streets better, or, you know, clean up some of these houses that need paint, force people to paint their houses. We used to be a beautiful city, and now we're not. So there are some tough calls, very, very difficult calls you have to make on City Commission, and it's very uncomfortable a lot of times. You know, but we have to keep moving forward. We can't always be looking back. Again, I'm thrilled with our history. I'd love to feature our history, because we do have some amazing things that have happened here, but we've got to keep moving forward, or we're just going to stagnate. And I've seen a lot of small towns that are just on their last gasp death, because they just, you know, they tried to live on their past. Anyway, thanks again for coming tonight.[1720.13][1720.13](applause)
Well, with that, that concludes tonight's forum. I want to thank you, the audience, for showing up on such a beautiful day, for addressing the candidates in the question-and-answer portion, and involving yourselves in city politics. That's very commendable. I want to mention, I also want to thank the candidates for being up here and getting grilled and answering random questions. That was very nice for them to share their viewpoints and opinions on some tough questions. I want to remind people that Tuesday, April 7th, is when you should go vote. There is early voting. You can vote either here or at Crystal Brook, which is 801 West Chestnut Church. Lastly, I believe that the candidates are willing to stay around if you want to address some personal questions with them, or if you weren't, if you didn't want to address questions in front of the audience, I'm sure they'd be willing to field some questions. And with that, I believe that we're done. All right. Thank you very much.[1790.83][1790.83](applause) (end of transcript)